Call the meeting order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden?
Here.
Ms. Schenholster?
Here.
Mr. Joyner?
Here.
Mr. Mullins?
Here.
Mr. Chambers?
Here.
Thank you. We do have a forum present. Welcome everyone to our meeting this evening. I ask that you would stand for the prayer and pledge, please. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are thankful for this day that you have provided for us. We're thankful for all of those who are gathered here. We're thankful for this community. And Father, we're furthermore thankful for the ability to serve this community. We feel that when we serve others, that we serve you. And we ask that you would lead us and guide us in the direction that you would have us go and have us do things that are according to your will and taking up the business of our community to make it a better place for all of us to live. We thank you for those servants that we have abroad. We thank you for the ones that are in public office in our State House and in the federal government. And Lord, we're always thankful for the many blessings that you give us. We ask these things in your holy name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Counsel, entertain a motion for the adoption of the March 12th council meeting minutes.
Amen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here and now, ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Walden?
Aye.
Ms. Schenholster?
Aye.
Mr. Joyner?
Aye.
Mr. Mullins?
Aye.
Mr. Chambers?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes. Move to old business. I'll ask the clerk if he would read, well, let me, just a second. Let me actually tell you, if you'll indulge me just a moment, how our public hearing is going to go. We do have a public hearing tonight. The first is to allow a special use of 901 South Jefferson Street. Once it's been determined that the hearing has been properly advertised, then I'll ask the clerk if he would read the proposed amendment. We will then hear the advisory decision of planning and zoning. I'll recognize any person or persons who would like to speak on behalf of the amendment. Then I will hear from any person or persons who would like to speak in opposition. You will have an opportunity for rebuttal if there's opposition. When I recognize anyone, I would like to ask first that you give your name and address for the record and certainly approach the podium to do so. And I would like to encourage anyone who would like to speak for or against. But in the essence of time, I'm requiring or asking you that you would keep your comments as brief as possible and germane to the subject. The first hearing is to consider ordinance 001, and I would ask the clerk if the public hearing has been correctly posted and advertised.
Yes, sir, it has been.
Would you read the ordinance by caption, please?
This is an ordinance granting a special use for a recycling drop-off center located at 901 South Jefferson Street as authorized by the Land Development Code of the City of Millersville, Georgia.
And would you present the decision of planning and zoning, please?
Yes, sir. It was recommended for approval.
Thank you. Would anyone like to speak in favor of the amendment?
Adam Payden, 901 South Jefferson Street. I'm the owner of Ace Recycling. I've been there for four years now. In last June, the city had asked me to put up a fence, a wooden fence, all the way around my property. I had no problem putting up the wooden fence. I thought it would give me more use of my front parking lot since you weren't allowed to see anything anymore. So, put up the fence. Still don't want me to use my front parking lot. I've been using it for the past year. And it completely hides everything from the roadway. Can't see anything. And then I also want to be able to take in other recyclable materials, as in light iron and other items like that. Due to the fact that July 1st, the new state laws for recycling came in and it put a lot of restrictions on the way things could be brought in and what it does. So, I just need to take other recyclables with that. I started taking those back in July, and so it's been about seven, eight months now. And so the place looks pretty much how the place would look at any time now. I mean, I've been doing it for seven, eight months. I don't have any piles of anything or any debris laying around that you can see from the roadway and things like that. And all the material that's on my property, I have to keep 60% of it moved every 30 days according to my EPA stormwater permit. And I always do that. I try to keep as much material moved all the time as I can. I don't ever like anything sitting on the ground. I want it gone. I mean, so I mean, I always keep up with everything the way I do it. I also have two other locations. One's in Monroe and one's in Saloon. We have no limitations there. We have nothing on the ground. We leave everything. As soon as it gets there, we move it. It's loaded and gone. So even with those two places, I just try to keep everything moved and clean and do what I'm supposed to do. I always, you know, I try to do what the city asks me to do on keeping the place clean. And I always try to help the police. I'm doing whatever they ask me to do. I've always gone above and beyond what the law actually says. So, I know this is not why we're here today, but I do have a letter from one of the detectives that they've given me. If any of you want to read it? I don't know if anybody's ever driven by my property or not, but I do have a picture if anybody would like to take a look at it.
Counsel, anyone like to look at it?
Yeah, if anybody just wanted. I just have a picture.
Ms. Walden, use your microphone if you would, please, ma'am. Thank you.
In fact, you said that you don't have debris on the ground. And on occasions, I know of several times I have had to call and I turned it in to the city manager where that's why the code enforcement came out. And now you have a privacy fence up, right?
Correct.
That privacy fence, is that because the city asked you to put up the privacy fence?
Yes.
Okay.
Probably the debris was something that we were working on or something like that. It just looked like debris.
Well, the privacy fence looks nice up there now, but, I mean, you said you didn't ever have debris on the ground.
Oh, yeah, well, I mean...
And that's...
Well, I mean, like...
I mean, when we granted your request, you said you were not going to.
Yeah.
And you did have debris on the ground, and I did...
Yeah, well, yeah, it was not stuff that we were like recycling. It was probably equipment and stuff and stuff like that because we don't, I don't ever leave piles of stuff anywhere. That's all we go, straight in a baler or something like that and bill material. I try to keep everything loose, lies off the ground.
Well, if you weren't, I mean, I know you say you're trying to, but if you, I mean, we get, we let you do that because we try to encourage as many businesses as we can here. And for recycling, when you said everything was going to be done on the inside, that was one of the reasons that I voted for it because I thought that's what was going to happen. But then, like I said, I had several complaints and that's...
I mean, yeah.
But the privacy fence does look nice, but...
Unfortunately, that parking lot didn't hold up like I thought it was going to. I thought it was going to have a nice asphalt parking lot.
And it hasn't held up.
No, it's only about an inch.
If trucks start coming in there, it has a lot of trouble, doesn't it?
Is the forklift? They want the trucks, is the forklift. I just didn't know. But I do have my stormwater permit. I've done all that. Do try to keep everything behind the privacy fence now that I have it up. And I'm just requesting to take light iron excluding cars and just be able to use my parking lot.
I guess I have a question because I've heard you say that twice, and I'm looking at the attachment that we have here. And you're saying that you would like to have drop-off recyclables permitted within the parking lot area of the lot, which is enclosed with a wooden privacy fence. You need full use of your property. So what you're saying now is that you have no use in, of your parking lot at all?
According to the original guidelines, I'm not supposed to be using my parking lot. I have been using my parking lot.
Are you saying that you want the parking lot to be available for people to drop off stuff or you want to put stuff in your parking lot?
No.
I guess that's what's confusing to me because you're saying that you need to use your parking lot, but are you going to use it for people to drop off stuff that you're going to take inside or you need to put stuff in your parking lot?
For people to drop off, to put inside, not to, for people just to throw stuff off. It's just because, I mean, there's not a very big parking lot up front, and people just pull in. I used to be able to get them back up to the door. They won't do that now. I have a hard time getting some people to pull in. They don't want to go past the gate. They do. But, I mean, we always clean the parking lot and everything and sweep it and blow it, but people just nails and screws and everything. But yeah, just to unload vehicles and then take it in.
So you said unload vehicle, so, so people can just come up in there and just leave stuff and go?
No, well, they could. They don't. They want to get paid for it. We just unload them. We have the scales right there at the door and just weigh them up there and then pay them for it.
Can I ask where you're planning to store the things that come in?
The same locations I've been storing it past. Most everything's inside. There are a couple of bales that we keep outside or a few bales that we keep on the side of aluminum, but everything, mostly everything's inside. I'm not planning on having piles of metal anywhere or anything like that. That's not what I'm asking for. The same location everything is now, basically.
Excuse me, Adam. I wanted to ask you, when did you put the fence up?
It was last June, I think.
Okay. I think part of the original agreement between the city and you was that you put a fence up.
It was the chain link fence.
Okay.
That I remember.
But, but to be a privacy fence?
No, they, they wouldn't let me put up a privacy fence when I first started. I'd asked to, but they didn't want me to.
And now it's what?
No, they, they got me to put up a privacy fence back in June.
Okay. And the reason?
They had just come by and asked me to put it up just to add the activity, I guess, on the inside of the fence there.
Okay. And you actually put the fence up?
I did. That's all I know.
Okay. Last year?
Yeah, it was, it was last June. I mean, I'd put it up really on the expectations of them not to use my parking lot.
All right, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, did you make it privacy last June or you actually put the fence up last year?
I made it privacy last year.
Okay. You also mentioned that for the past seven or eight months, you had been taking in other items?
Yes. Just due to the new state laws that had come out last July, it kind of, it put me in a situation where I had to on the way that people could break things down and what they could bring in and what they couldn't bring in. And so the way that changed, it kind of forced me to change on what I took.
Can you explain the state laws that you can't take things apart now? You have to take it as a whole unit on certain items.
There were certain items, and it just kind of forced me to take those other items.
And when did you notify the city that you would be doing things other than what the original agreement?
Honestly, don't remember. It was probably September or August, September. Because the whole thing happened pretty fast when they changed the state laws. There was a lot that had to be done. So, it was kind of a big shift on everything. So, I guess it was around that time period. Not 100% positive on that, but I think it was around that time period.
Any other questions for Mr. Payden?
Yeah, I have a question. I think my main concern is that you put a privacy fence. We appreciate that, that's a fact. But in the original deal, you have no material outside. And I guess what we're concerned about now, if we approve this, it's, ain't no limit to the height that you can put it, you know?
I...
So, you know, you know, we...
I understand. I mean, and that's, that's why...
And that's a major corridor into the city, and we just trying to, we would love to keep it.
I don't want to go crazy with it. I mean, the way I started seven months ago, seven, eight months ago, man, what I'm asking to do is exactly what I've been doing for the past seven, eight months. So really, the way, I mean, it looks now, that's kind of the way it's going to look. Now, in the other two locations that I don't have any limitations on, I'm in city limits of each of them. And I've never had one issue. And we've never, we don't have anything on the ground. We keep it all moved.
Adam, you said you sent notice to the city of taking the additional materials somewhere?
I talked to the city. I don't...
So there's, there's nothing on the books that would, that you submitted in writing or, okay?
Okay, I guess just for clarification purposes, you just said that you have locations in other cities.
That's correct.
And you don't have anything on the ground there.
No, we can't.
But the reason why we had, you had to be asked to put up a privacy fence here was because you did have stuff on the ground. So, but you, but at the same time, you're saying that you're not going to keep anything outside. But that was the problem in the first place. You told us that you would not have anything outside and you would not have anything on the ground, so we only required you to put up a chain link fence. So what's the difference between your grounds here and how you keep your grounds in the other cities, since you, you were the one that mentioned that they don't have anything on the grounds? Why, then why are you having stuff on the grounds here?
I, I think the only thing that people are seeing that's on the ground is just like equipment pieces and stuff like that. I mean, that's not any scrap material. It might, I mean, it might look like scrap material to a lot of people, but it's probably just equipment pieces. They're just different shapes, small and big, but I don't have, you know, like any loose material or anything like that. No.
Are there any plans or anything to put those, those types of items?
No.
And somewhere else where, where they won't be visible on your grounds when, whenever things come in that you have to take apart? I mean, is there somewhere that you can put those besides on the ground when you take those in?
Yeah, we put them, we put them straight in a container on the materials like that.
That's what she's getting at, Adam. It's that, when he says nothing on the ground, it's loose material. When everything comes in, it goes into a baler or a bin, roll-off, and it has place to go. And that's what he's talking about when he talks about his other locations. There's not piles everywhere. He's not saying there's nothing on the ground because there's bins and there's, you know, the things that they're supposed to go in.
Excuse me just a second. You know, I give you, you know, I give you latitude because this is your son. But one reason why I would like for you to approach the podium when you have a comment like that is so everybody can hear you. They can't hear you. We can, but nobody outside can. No, I understand.
Yeah.
And we always can conduct these with no comments from the audience. And respectfully, I'm just telling you that because we need to actually hear that. So, anyone else, if you, if you have any comments, please hold them until you can approach the podium and do it in an official manner. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak in favor?
You want to be favor first, or...
No, this is, we're still in the favor.
We're still in the favor.
Yes, if you'd like to speak in favor.
I held my tongue as long as I could. They didn't see me over there squirming. Debbie Thompson, 115 Spruce Point, Eaton, Georgia. And, you know, I'm Adam's mother, and he's been doing this business down there for four years. He never expected the volume that he's gotten and the growth that he's gotten down there. He's got three full-time employees. He's managed to go into two other cities and open up recycling. He's got plans to go into another one. It's a dirty business, and it's, it's not something I would want to do. It's not something most people would want to do. But when you go down there and you see how hard these guys work and how much time they spend picking up, baling, I mean, it's tough. It's, it's a hard, dirty business, but it's needed. If we didn't have recycling centers in convenient locations, we would have more debris on the road than just the trash we've got on the road. You'd start seeing more stuff being dumped. You have to have a convenient place for people to bring their recyclables in. And we do want to encourage the recycling. But what I was trying to say is, you know, when he says there's nothing on the ground, it means that you're not just taking stuff and piling it up. Because one thing that, you know, he knows, by law, you have to keep 60% of your product turned within 30 days. It's with water, but it's also money. You know, he knows that if he gets all his stuff piled up, that's money. And if you're not sending your stuff out as fast as you can, you're going to lose money and you're going to go out of business. Well, to be as young as he is, he's done very well in the last four years. And he has wanted to put up the fence. We talked about it several times, and I kept saying, "Adam, why don't you just, you know, put up a wooden privacy fence and all that?" And he said, "Well, they wouldn't let him." He had his chain link fence, fence, which he was supposed to, but he's wanted to put that fence up for a long time. And when he got permission to put up the privacy fence, he did. And it was very expensive to, to do that, but it made it look a lot better. But it, but it's a dirty business. It's, but it's one we need, and they do work really hard. Y'all have any questions that...
Any questions for Ms. Thompson?
You know, it's nice to see young people stay here. Out of all my kids, I've only got one in town. And so we like to encourage our young people to come back and start a useful business.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of the amendment? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir.
My name is Frank Townsend, and I live at 269 Law Kevin Road, but I have the property adjacent to him. And like you said, at Planning and Zoning Commission, he had already violated agreements with the city because he could not keep stuff off the ground. Plus two, he's also started, like you said, seven or eight months ago, taking in other materials. I thought you were supposed to have a permission before you started something like that. And the ground is, asphalt and all is being, is already torn up and to be polluted with oil, drainage fluid, and all this kind of stuff. And that seeps into the ground, and I don't care how you do it. Handling motors and transmissions, they're going to fall on the ground and they're going to pour out oil. I've been in the business dealing with cars all my life. And it just seems like that that carrying thing is a little too far. If you can't keep up with what the agreement was to start with, I don't think we ought to expand it so he can really go out off the deep end. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions, counsel? Thanks, sir. Anyone else like to speak in opposition to the amendment? You do have a chance for rebuttal.
Speaking of the transmissions and everything, that was part of the original agreement four years ago. Their most, all transmissions and motors are made of aluminum, so I've been taking those for four years. Get my EPA permit renewed every year. I haven't had one issue. All that, I keep as clean as possible. I keep everything off the ground, like all the, I don't allow oil in there if anybody has that without a drain.
Thanks, sir. Do, we'd like to recognize those in opposition for rebuttal also. Council members, any questions or comments?
I think, I want to make a comment. I think this is something that is on all of our minds here, and that is the length of time that it took the city to, to get another recycling center that is located in the, within the incorporated area to be able to move, mainly because of the presence of all the recycled material, but also because of the situation of traffic being impaired, the ability to be able to move up and down through the street. And, you know, it, it concerns me personally of what are we opening back up to?
I understand. And that's what I'm trying to say there. There's not enough...
Adam, if you would approach the podium, please. Thank you.
There's really not enough room in my parking lot to be able to do that anyway because I would be cutting myself off because it would be impossible if I started doing that to get people in there. And I understand what you're saying, what happened. I'm, I'm not trying to be like that, and I know it's hard for me to say that and expect y'all to understand what, what I'm saying. But, and it's, it's not something I want to do, anything like that, because I do have other things on the parking lot that I do. I've got my own personal trailers that I keep up there. I just pull behind my truck. And then I also need room for people to pull in. I, I just don't want any materials piled up. I'd explain to the planning and zoning. I mean, I've, I've done it the exact way I'm planning on doing it for the last little while. And so I'm not really planning on changing anything. This is kind of what, what it looks like now is kind of what I'm asking to do.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'll echo what Ms. Debbie said. It's always, from personal experience, good to see a younger person invest in business in Millersville. That's a very stated goal in our community, so I personally certainly applaud you for that and want you to do well. I'm a little late to the party on this particular issue and have been researching it all day. I'm still trying to reconcile the part of you taking additional materials and how you informed the city and whether there were or were not documentations of you accepting those additional materials. You said you called the city, but it doesn't sound like there was anything on record about that, so I'm, I'm still trying to understand that part of this process.
We had talked, I'd, had been down there to my place, and I'd been to...
Talking about code?
Yeah. And then I've also been to code enforcement next door. Yeah. And then I've also been to code enforcement next door.